Welcome, we're gonna get our work session rolling here. We've got three or four things to talk about in the work session and I'm sure it'll take the remaining 55 minutes, so we'll get started. Dr. Barnett, anything you want to say?
Just welcome everybody here. Decided to have the groups here today that are coming forward. Of course, it's the last day of school with students. Of course, that's always kind of an exciting time for students and kind of a, you know, the summer break here, I know a lot of work will be done. I'll be honest with you, I always, I wasn't really as excited about summer break as a lot of folks were. I was, you know, kind of, whatever. I know it is an exciting time for most of our students and our teachers, kind of rejuvenating, getting fresh. So I hope everybody has a good summer, stay safe and hopefully read a book or two during that time. I know we've got a lot of scholars here, so I'm anticipating a lot of book reading over the summer, so it's definitely nice.
Good deal. All right, I think the first on the agenda is the Sylvania Beta Club. We've got some representatives from Sylvania. How are we gonna do? What are we doing? Are you still there?
What happened this last one?
Sort of acting.
I make work if you look closer.
You're gonna pick up Holden.
I know we got one right here. This young man right here, he is Brayden Fricks. And he is, was elected the State Beta Club reporter, State Beta Reporter. What grade are you, Brayden?
Fourth.
Fourth grade, probably the youngest, I guess the youngest that's ever been elected because I know they haven't had fourth graders in the state club for very long, so that is awesome. I did see a clip of his speech and of course they do a little skit and all that stuff and it was, it was, what was the, what was the theme of your skit?
Just one click, Brayden Fricks.
Just one click, Brayden Fricks. I like it, that's good, that's good. Of course Brayden, his, his parents, Lacy and Brayden Fricks, they're both educators here in DeKalb County, they both teach for us here in DeKalb County, so we're very, very proud of Brayden and his accomplishments here. We also have Ms. Kate Berry, she'll come on up here. She is the State Secretary, State Secretary for the Beta Club. She's from Henninger, a member of the Henninger Club. What was your, what was your theme?
It was, it was like the Olympic themes, so like, it's like big bowling ball, where the gold and the trophy for secretary.
Ah, very good, very good. I don't know, I'm sure anybody who has Facebook, when the Junior Beta Club was competing at the state, you basically couldn't get on Facebook without watching at least a few of these videos. It was very good. Everybody from DeKalb County was winning awards left and right, and so that was very exciting. Of course, she's from Henninger and her parents are with us here, Chris and Laurel Berry back there, so we're proud of them and their family as well. We also have Sarah Beth Benson, come on up, young lady. She was elected State Vice President and very, very good job. Tell us what your theme was?
It was the SP for being paid easy as one, two, three.
Ah, very good, very good, very good. Your parents with us? Where are we at? Oh, I see them, I missed, I, they're behind me. Mr. Benson, she works for us here in the county, so very excited to have them and appreciate their work. And then we also have Ms. Lily Rao, come on up, Ms. Lily. She was, she decided to go for president. She decided to go for the president position. What was your theme?
Help Beta Blue.
Help Beta Blue. Excellent, excellent, excellent. So we're proud of you guys. Tell us a little bit about what you learned going through this process of running for state office. Now, if you can get in front of a picture.
Can you get around 14, 15 miles?
There's not over 60 people here. Surely you talk.
It took a lot of guts to get up on the stage and talk in front of everybody.
Exactly, you're right, that's awesome. We're very proud of you, we want to argue, we'd like to get maybe a picture of you all with the board here, if we could get one. Go fly with me.
Is that Charles?
Yes, sir.
He's got my hat.
I think I got it, I've got a new phone and I don't really know how to use it.
One of these models. Your Beta Club parents know how to get stuff on Facebook, so we'll be all right.
I got it.
Listen, y'all, we're very proud of y'all.
[applause]
So, son, that is, is that four out of five?
Four out of five officers in the state are from DeKalb County. That is, that's extremely impressive. Speaks well to our talent and the...
All our sponsors and all the...
Anybody that's been involved in Beta Club, any of the sponsors, spend hours after hour, after hour, being involved. And of course, the parents do as well, and a lot of fundraising, a lot of set designs, a lot of skit rehearsals. I mean, it's just, you know, and it's not just all this, there's all these competitions and things like that that go into it. There's, you know, it's really a major undertaking, so I'm proud of them and all the sponsors and everybody's involved, that's really good.
It is a lot of work, there's 4,000 people that they're speaking in front of, so that's amazing.
Yep. We also have the Skills USA winners with us. Y'all want to come on up here? Jonathan, you want to introduce them? Maybe we'll call them up one by one, I don't know how you want to do this.
I'm kidding. Just embarrass them if they want to.
That's what I was about to say, I was wanting Mr. Holden to explain about the officers that we have.
I can do that.
This, this is one part of our group. We actually have 20 that will be going to Nationals in Louisville, Kentucky, the third week of June, which is the largest we've had in our school history. The, our students from DeKalb County showed out this time in state competition. We had 29 muck medals total, more than any college or high school in the state of Alabama. And we also had eight gold medals, which was a record for DeKalb County. So they did great. Well, this right here is part of our opening and closing ceremony, and I'll let Mr. Holden explain a little bit about that.
This is five of the seven members that had to do an official, how you open and close a meeting. They're judged on their dress, they're poised where they stand and sit at the same time. If they add or take away from the script, they're supposed to know. This group won first place at district, first place gold medal, gold medal at district, gold medal at state, and they're going to Louisville, Kentucky this summer. Also, Trevor was elected a state officer. Trevor and Allison and one other were elected district officers, and we have a national candidate who is working at Wendy's tonight that'll be running for a national office in Louisville, Kentucky. We have lots of other program winners from robotics and healthcare, masonry. We appreciate all those sponsors, we appreciate your support. It's a great organization. I worked with Beta Club for many years, and so now I'm working with Skills USA, and it's my first adventure with the leadership, but it's been a lot of fun, I've learned a lot and excited about taking these young people to Louisville for seven days.
Right, I'm on the way to June, and another thing, so I know I'd like to add, actually in the history of the tech school, we've won our 50th state title this year. And, you know, a lot of people think that's a large number, and it really is when you start thinking about it, there's some tech schools in the state that only has one or two. So that just contributes how great, how blessed we are with instructors and students, we have some of the best. And I want to thank y'all, everything y'all did.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm glad you're here.
I know I'd like to add, actually in the history of the tech school, we've won our 50th state title this year. And, you know, a lot of people think that's a large number, and it really is when you start thinking about it, there's some tech schools in the state that only has one or two. So that just contributes how great, how blessed we are with instructors and students, we have some of the best. And I want to thank y'all, everything y'all did.
Thank you.
[applause]
Fricks, you have Miss Corrigan, email us earlier, she was talking about the tech school earlier today, I'm glad you had a chance to check her up. But she was talking about Mr. Phillips, one of our masonry instructors over there, hopefully maybe, maybe coming up soon, maybe we can bring him in and honor him a little bit. He's had a, over the course of his career, 23, 24 years, something like that, he's won , I believe, 50 individual state medals, 20 state championships, 11 that were in second year masonry, nine in the first year, made it to Nationals 11 times, which is incredible. Five out of the 10 times he went at National, brought a medal, three silver, two bronze. He was a former national champion himself in 1988. So that's, that's quite an accomplishment for a program, for somebody to teach that program, so that's, I'm glad. You know, I know we, we all understand and recognize what an asset he is to our county. Sometimes we don't promote it probably the way we could, and that's probably, you know, I take some ownership of that as well, but that's, that's quite an accomplishment that he has in that program, so that's maybe the next couple meetings or something, maybe he can come and we can thank him in person for his work there.
Yeah, every time, we started doing this every month, I'm just amazed at the amount of talent and the accomplishments that we have that we get to see that's coming in. So we didn't used to get to know about it. Yeah, yeah, so I hope y'all are enjoying that as well. We've got a great, a great bunch of kids in this system and I'm proud to see all their accomplishments. Okay.
We wanted to let a couple of our supervisors, of course, as we mentioned when we started this, we wanted to have some guests and things like that, we also wanted to hear from supervisors who bring for us some updates. At this time, Mr. Jason Mayfield, he's going to present us a little bit of update on some federal program committee and some different things regarding federal programs.
I'm going to share the notes from the Federal Programs Advisory Committee that met on May 15th. I'll have some extras available up here if anybody wants them later, but on Monday the 15th, we met with a mixture of teachers, administrators, and parents, and the teachers ranged from veteran teachers and late teachers to teachers with three or years less experience. The intent is, number one, to be compliant with the group we're supposed to have, number two, is to get feedback from a variety of folks. Basically, what happens at those meetings is we go through and we, we look at how we have been allocating funds, how we've been putting funds in the budget, and we go through the intent of, of one of various grants, Title I, Title I School Improvement, Migrant, Title III, and Title VI and Title II. And I'm not going to read all these notes, they're, they're available for, for public review, and we will also post them on, on the website in the next, DeKalb County website next there too. But, but in short, you know, we looked at what we're doing with Title II, in particular, where we started, it's Title II and FY19. So we'll have Title II and FY18, but right now, Title II is being zeroed out, out for the fiscal year 2019. We currently hold 5.94 teachers that are being funded class size reduction units out of Title II. So the, the major intent is I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that, the public was aware of that, that, you know, we'll have to be looking at how to either support those teachers or we could have some lost units, hopefully that's not the case, but that's going to be taking place over, over the next couple of years in FY19. Another thing that we looked at real closely was long ago, it's probably been just under, just shy of a decade since we've been receiving school messenger messages, the phone messages. Those come out, those are funded through Title I parental involvement, which initially, that is a perfect fund source to start something like that, but we've been using it for many years now, and it's basically going, starting to become considered to be institutionalized and otherwise, in other words, these funds are supposed to be supplemental, and school messenger is becoming something that we're going to do every day regardless of whether we have them or not. So we're asking the board and our CSFO and our superintendent to be looking at an alternative fund source that's approximately $19,000, but we want to free those funds up so that our school committees can begin to look at other ways to support parents with that money, so that's something we want to be looking at in the future. Another thing that we talked about, and I've shared this a couple of times publicly already, we started out a few years ago, four years ago I believe, at Crossville Middle School with a migrant pre-K. This was before we had many of the Office of School Readiness pre-Ks across the county, in fact, it was about a year before I guess, and migrant funds have reduced, have been reduced at the federal level and it's, you know, as it trickled down to the state to us, and so we've had to discontinue the migrant pre-K for FY18, for that 2017-18 school year. Crossville at this time does have, they are, they do have two other pre-K grants, it's a large population, and we have applied, Ms. Crosby has applied, for another Office of School Readiness grant, and that we're waiting to see the outcome of that, but we did talk about that to the committee. Also during the meeting, we made a determination, and this isn't anything that will change our after-school programs significantly, in fact, you're not going to really see a change at all, but 21st century, we're growing, we have multiple 21st century sites in DeKalb County, and so over the course of this summer, between now and October 1, we're going to be developing some local standards. These grants came about, sometimes one at a time, two at a time, three at a time, and there are reasons why you would want a grant like that, to be unique to the school. We're not going to, we're not going to change anything, you know, for instance, Collinsville High School, they do a great job with a before-school program, and they, they're taking care of some special needs they have, they're still, not that we all could benefit from it, but we're not going to determine that Collinsville can't do that or that Crossville program has to have that, so we're, but we are going to build in some standards in regards to, we'll be looking at, at the pay for teachers and for the, the time during the summer and just things like that. Another thing, and when we, when we met, we also looked at, we're on the heels of a really good professional development program that we had just been meeting with school, with teams from each school in the process of, of improving our continuous improvement plan development. And so our advisory committee, we, we met with someone that was really strong for DeKalb County years ago when she worked for the state, and she, when, when their program ended, the presenter that we met, we got snatched up by Jefferson County to serve, you know, in-school improvement and accountability and do some things, and so as we talked about that with the advisory committee, we want to look at some of our federal dollars supporting us a similar position, something we want to consider for the future. And that was the advisory committee meeting. Do you have any questions?
I think the Title II and the 21st century, like you mentioned, the federal budget, that's something that seems, fortunately, the state budget, obviously we get it, it's for that next year, the federal budget is a little bit further ahead, so we kind of at least have a timeframe that we kind of know what we've got to work through or work to, I guess, so that does help us a little bit. Of course, that's not passed, it still has to go through Congress, there's a lot of key things and amendments that could happen to that, but it is something with a new president, you know, you get these things that are changing, so it's kind of gives us something that we need to maybe look through working as we go through these next few months and making these changes.
I'm, I'm interested in the position that you talked about, that helps with, with school improvement and all these other programs. That would be, that's not a position we have currently.
It's not, and, and while, when we worked with Kelly Jaeger, and there was another lady that we partnered with from the state, Jody Jacobs, when we worked with these folks, you know, I, I would, it'd be hard to measure some of the progress that we made, and the room was so positive that day because teachers were being exposed to things in, in a way that we couldn't have done, you know, the, some of the stuff that Kelly was talking about, that she'd been doing with Jefferson County, it's things that we should be doing, but the way, you know, she was able to deliver it was, it was impressive. Digging in deeper into the standards, you know, unwrapping them to a teacher and student in a way where, you know, progress is just evident, you know what I mean, just having an instructional framework, you know, years ago, we, we took a step back with, when Dr. Weiss came in with some good ideas, and I'll be honest, we were probably too far in the direction of, of control at the district, and that's not what this is about. That's not the time we were working with Kelly Jaeger and Jody Jacobs. That's, that's when they left and we tried to pick up where they were at and probably went a little bit too far. But they worked with an instructional framework that I, I think really, the teachers in the room that I spoke to that day, they would love to have something like that, you know, it sounded very positive.
When Jody was here, the graduation rate, anyway?
We, we started in, and it was with both these ladies, it's hard for me to determine when one ended and one began because I was too close to, to be able to separate, but in the district at the time, we had a graduation exam, which means that each student that, that crossed the stage, you know, unless they had a special need that allowed them to, to not pass a particular portion, had to pass the graduation exam. When we started working with these ladies, our grad, and by the way, these ladies just brought us the guidance. Our teachers, what I was about to say, our teachers in DeKalb County accomplished, our students accomplished, and I don't want to ever let that go unsaid, but our graduation rate, when we started working with these ladies, was 78% as a district, and when we finished, our graduation rate was 90%. And, you know, that came off the hard work of a lot of our teachers, but a lot of the things we were doing at that time was produced by some guidance that we were receiving from some, some really strong influences.
Would you, I mean, are you looking at a possible, possibility of a position or a contract person or what, what this person's getting a contract? It seems to me a contract might be as good of a way to do it, but I mean, maybe you're talking about a position?
I've been looking, I mean, you know, if you, and not that I'm on par with any of these ladies that we're talking about here, but, you know, each supervisor, each instructional coach, you know, we can, you can kind of compare schools in a school system to various school systems that the state is supporting, okay? So if I go in, in the day when I, when I, when I went into schools more as a professional development facilitator, if I go into a school and I deliver professional development, if I do the best job in the world, I leave that school and it doesn't generally get much further than, you know, we had a great meeting during this planning period, great ideas were shared, but a teacher has to go back into that classroom and students are right there, and it's hard to get rolling with that. I would, I would say it as a position, and a position where we could have someone to sustain it over a long period of time, to sustain it and watch, and watch it grow, and as it grows, you know, continue to work with our board and our superintendent and other supervisors, our principals and our teachers, and grow with it, you know, not just take, we've reached this level, take this level and keep going further, keep going higher. I would say it as a position as opposed to a contract.
You want somebody already trained, ready to go, not have to be come in and be trained?
It's not a position, you know, there are positions in the world that you can, a lot of them, that you can grow into. I, I would like us to have someone that's ready to hit the ground rolling, and instead of them going into the position, letting us grow to where they're at and then move further.
Most of our decisions like this always come down to money. What's your estimate here, what, 80, 85% would be covered by federal funds?
I believe that 80, you know, I know, when you say that in the same sentence as, hey, we're losing Title II, Title II supports class size reduction, it's not going to, I mean, it can't support a position like this, it's not intended for that. And so, at the same time, some of the funds that we would have available, like the school improvement, they support outside of the box activities and can't support class size reduction. Could they support a contract? They could. They could support a contract for someone to come in and do this on the short term, but I think with, with school improvement and Title I and maybe a couple of other fund sources here, here, there, and yonder, but I think we could probably cover at least 85% of the position. Also, I wouldn't want the position to be limited to six school improvement schools, so that's why I would look at Title I, but I also wouldn't want it limited to only supporting federal requirement needs. We also have an Alabama Accountability Plan that we're also responsible for, we have a State of Alabama report card that we're responsible for, so I would like to see, you know, definitely not the bulk of this thing covered by local, but I would like to see some local dollars available so, so that we can cover all the ground that we need to cover.
This, I guess the 85% percent from the federal, that may tie with one of the other...
It'd be a mixture of Title I School Improvement and, and Title I, and then we might be able to pick up a grant or two. I'm not promising that, I think we could do 85% out of just those two grants with very little impact, anything we're doing at the school.
Well, that's, that's my main thing, I mean, any, anything, anytime we're talking about a position is, is how is that going to affect those local schools or taking, taking those out?
School improvement, okay, school improvement, right off the bat, school improvement is changing, and we have, currently we have focus schools and priority schools, of which we have six focus schools. It's going to change, and because I'm currently uncertain what that change will mean for what schools are considered school improvement, we have pulled out 1.7 that was in salaries from, from school improvement, that's, that's no longer going to be in salaries. So we've taken 1.7 out that was serving 100 kids, okay? And so I'm talking about taking those funds and some others and serving 9,000 kids.
Yeah.
In fact, you know, when we, first board meeting that we had in January, we talked a little bit about, you know, I... a little bit about, you know, I fully absolutely with the success of this district is going to be, my success is certainly going to be on the back of teachers, the teachers and their, how successful they are and by making the best placements that we can, that, of course, the teachers we've got, we need to support them, encourage them, provide them with the tools, both, you know, physical, technological tools and whatever they have in their classroom, but also PD and ongoing support, you know, and I believe, as Mr. Mayfield said, you know, these people, you know, that he previously worked with, they provided an opportunity and support for our teachers to make our system successful for that time. And I think that's kind of what we're looking at here, obviously, our teachers are going to be the ones that our success is going to be built on, but hopefully if we, if we could look, maybe find the way means to help support them, then that might be something that might support our district as a whole.
And I agree, and one thing I wanted to mention too is I know we use a lot of technology in that one, so if we make sure we're not taking that technology, we'll take it.
No, sir, the technology set aside that was suggested by this advisory committee two years ago, I didn't cover all the ground because, because of the length of the board session, but that is still intended to take place, this will not, this will not impact that. I'll be honest with you, I've, through the years, I've had the hard jobs sometimes, and the good jobs, so I've been happy for every job y'all given me, but I've had a challenging job, tough job sometimes, taking things to teachers that they didn't want to have. Some of those things might have been good for them, some of those things the teachers were one hundred percent right and I was one hundred percent wrong. But this room, on, I think it was May seventh and eighth, on May seventh and eighth, the things that we were talking about that day, the teachers, and granted, we didn't have every teacher in the district, but I want to say we had a picture of the district in the room. Those teachers were more interested, more excited, I had teachers tell me, I can't believe I'm going to say this, Mr. Mayfield, I'm excited about writing the CFP this year. You know, that's, I think that where our teachers are right now motivation wise, number one, I think these ladies are going to bring way better stuff to the table than I personally could, and number two, I think we need to seize that moment. If they walked into the room that hungry and that interested in what we were doing that day, we talked about unwrapping the standards, we talked about instructional framework, we talked about all these different things, and they just wanted more. It was a full day, we didn't even let them leave for lunch, now, we did feed them, which is always good, but, I mean, we barely broke for lunch because we had lunch on the premises. You know, many times, when you start to get close to the end of a session, I have, I mean, you know, people have this thing they got to do and that thing they got to do, I don't remember anybody leaving the room until Kelly Jaeger said, I'm done, you know, I mean, it was a good day.
But it's a key getting by in front of the teachers?
Yes, sir. It's just I'm thinking out loud here, I kind of like to see us, I mean, we're not like giving out of us, think about putting the job description together for that kind of thing, is that?
Wouldn't we get maybe a better, about a better person, but if we offered, you know, the full packages of benefits and I'll get a, we can call it more qualified or more interest versus just contract?
Well, I think, you know, contracting, there's a place for contracting, like you said, well, this is something that needs to be ongoing and sustained and sustainable. You could bring a person in for, you know, probably, you know, a lot of these contracted people are fifteen hundred dollars a day or something like that, you know, travel expenses and stuff like that, if you, if you contract them over a year, you're, you know, for, there were times you were going to pay a lot.
If it's going to be long term, yeah, I agree with that, if we don't know, we don't know where it's going, then contract.
And we do, we do some contracting at times with individuals when we need some of these things for two or three days or ongoing or maybe a quick boost up, but this, this type of position, and we talked about it, Mr. Mayfield, when he, when he followed up that advisory committee, he brought it back to me, we discussed it, and this, this is something that I can see as being something that we would need more, you know, ongoing, and I think we could probably all grow from, you know, under the right, right person or a larger position or something like this, something we definitely can consider and look forward to discussing further.
Good, good. Thank you, Mr. Mayfield. Mr. Bayle, you now have the floor.
I think y'all have all got a copy of this already, and Mr. Cooper did a better job than I did with the pine ashes there, but, just to explain a little bit about the virtual school program and hoping that we will be able to get a centralized location so that we could grow the program this year. Mr. Pope, who's in the back there, he was our facilitator, and he went from school to school, and what the virtual school kids, what it serves is for kids that may not want to go to the regular face-to-face school setting, they may want to advance, they may want to try to take some classes to get out of school a little earlier, there could be some problems. It fits a wide variety of issues there, and this year we had the schedule fixed so that he would go to a school one day a week and spend X amount of hours at that school, and that kid would come on school grounds because we didn't have a centralized location. So hopefully, what I would like for the board to do is investigate, look at possibly getting us a centralized location next year so that we can really grow the program. And I've kind of outlined some of the, some of the costs that I came up with and that Mr. Cooper discussed, again, his are going to be a little better than mine, but they're very similar. But again, some of the things about the centralized location, I think the stability of having one location, because the way we run the program this past year is students do the work at home, they take all their tests with us, we have to have a monitor for the test, and that way, anytime when they got to a certain point, they can come and test any day, because we had a couple of issues with kids, if we had to go, like I say, for instance, we went to Silvania on Monday, that kid was sick, we wouldn't get to see him for another week, sometimes that fell a little bit behind. It would help us with monitoring the kids, and again, I think a centralized location somewhere in Rainsville, which is kind of centrally located, would benefit everybody.
Do you feel like you could get more attendance if you had a centralized location?
I really do. Me and Mr. Pope, we discussed some things, these kids seem to interact a little better in a small setting than they did in the normal, in a normal school setting, they tend to, they tend to like the smaller group interaction. I think, I think we can grow the program, by the finances that Mr. Cooper gave, he broke it down pretty good, some of the things extra besides what's just on paper, we helped four students that, I know three of them probably wouldn't have graduated without being virtual school students for different issues. We had a few that had some health issues that had been attendance problems in the past, and that kind of took the burden off of that school because they could work at home and they have to come to school.
Is this kind of like, you're kind of recruiting the people, y'all be willing to go to the house?
We can't, that, that's, to bring the majority of the people in, that's what we look to do. But without, you know, without having a wide location, it was hard to go out and say, hey, you know, we're going to come and do it this way, so we, that's, you know, that's...
Come to where our house will meet us.
Yeah, I didn't want to bring that up, but that, that's what ended up having to happen last year, because again, we, we use this room a lot here, if something was in it.
Yeah.
When there wasn't anything in it, this was as good a room as you could get, but I'm sure that Dr. Barnett would not want us meeting in here every day.
Isn't that what we can do?
Well, and when Mark was talking about the, I guess, recruiting, we're talking about kids that's not in the system.
Yes, yes, just being totally honest with everybody, I mean, there is no real barriers to, you recruit out of county if you wanted to, you know, I mean, Jackson County, we got a pretty good relationship with them, and we've talked about that, and we've kind of kidded around, but you know, I mean, realistically, if they're in Jackson County, they probably need to go over there and we just work on to Cab County, but you know, if they're not going to, you know, I don't exactly how their virtual school is going to play out, they didn't have very many in it this year. But yeah, targeting the home school crowd is where you would increase your enrollment, especially at some of our schools that enrollment has decreased over the past few years.
Home school, the home, right?
Yeah, yeah, the home school, the home school right there, because again, you know, provide a free education for that child, rather than having to pay a company like Penn Foster or one of the others, Fuel Education, who's approached us, you know, some of those programs are pretty expensive, you know, eighteen hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars, you know.
Can you go first, do you?
Yes, sir.
And like I say, the key to this, just like we're talking about, Mr. Mayfield, is that, is that when we do, we do this, we're not, we're not hurting the local school, and that's, that's my, that's my main thoughts on all of it. You know, it serves a need definitely for those kids who, you know, for whatever reason, this might be a better situation for them, and we do get the allotment from the state for each one of those, so obviously, forgetting them that we're not, that we might, those we might lose, all of those that are not part of the system, that's probably, it's not necessarily a negative, we get it from current schools, but it's not, it's not helping.
It's not helping us. The one other thing that I did want to touch base on that is, Ms. Cannon and myself, we discussed this a long time ago here about the gifted students. Sometimes we don't have a lot of programs for our gifted students that are in sixth, seventh and eighth grade, maybe more in seventh and eighth grade, so this could possibly provide some help for some of those students that were interested.
So if we get them enrollment up enough, it'll support the staff?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think the way we figured it, twenty-eight, somewhere between twenty-eight and thirty-one or two kids would sustain the program, and over the course of this year, we served around forty kids in some capacity.
About half and half.
Yeah, about half, yeah, we had, we had about three students that at their school, they couldn't get what they needed to kind of advance themselves, so we put them in an access course or an edutiny course and allowed them to get that credit to move on. And the software company that we're going to look at using next year, the curriculum, it's pretty reasonable in price.
I have to break things down simple, so here's, here's how I broke it down.
Okay, got you.
You're asking us to support it until the time we get those twenty-eight additional students, which would get it to the breakeven point, in some regard, I mean, I know we're supporting now.
Yeah.
I would think the board's question for you would be, with you and Mr. Pope, do you think you can round up twenty-eight additional students?
Yeah.
This next school?
Yeah.
That, that, because that's going to help us make the connections.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure I can get, because we're going to have about eight, we got, I think, eighteen that Mr. Cooper figured out that realistically, you know, we kept from leaving, we brought in, and those kind of things. As of right now, I've got ten that have caught in contact, and again, we won't probably take every one of those, just being honest, but you know, I think with a good location, with a little bit of advertisement, and I think we can pull some people in.
And all that's in the budget here?
Yes, sir.
Just talked about that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you, y'all, appreciate it, appreciate it. There's obviously the financial part, there's also the part about supporting students, I know several students who weren't going to graduate with their class and their family moved off, they would not have been able to have graduated with their classmates that they grew up with without this virtual program, there's some students who had some health issues, they support very, very well, obviously, it's not ideal for everybody, but beyond just the financial aspect, there's also the aspect of really helping some students who accelerate, whether they accelerate or some other issues, physical or health-wise, that may not allow them, you know, to go to school every day or pursue other things, so there's some other things in that consideration for them.
Good, good, thank you, Mr. Mayfield, appreciate it. Did, yeah, you had a question to discuss?
Yes, I would like to ask a few questions.
Okay.
As before I said, I serve as a voice for all the members in the county, and the answer to who makes the agenda was unclear to some of my members, we can revisit that question again, so who makes the agenda?
I'd be glad to answer it. We operate under Robert's Rules and Orders, which says that the president's responsible to the agenda, so it's either I make the agenda or I direct the agenda to be created, and we do that through the, through, I work with Dr. Barnett to put together the agenda.
Another question, what is the procedure for handling transfers?
Good question. Obviously, a few weeks back, we sent out a form to, you know, through the mass email, and anybody wanting to request a transfer can do so, they filled out that form and it's submitted to me and a document. What I did is I sorted that by teachers requesting a transfer to a specific location. For example, if a teacher was requesting a transfer to Colville, I created a document that had only the teachers that were requesting a transfer to Colville, the ones who were requesting to Colville, Crossville, Silvania, Hender, Valley Edmond, Labor, wherever it may be, and I submitted that to the principal, that way they would know that whoever those people were requesting a transfer. And of course, obviously, when anybody reaches out to me saying, hey, I'm interested in this position, and they're current, I always ask, ask them, have you spoken to the principal as well? Because while we may, you know, send out that email, I think it's good for the employee to also take the initiative to contact that school principal and let them know that they're, you know, hey, introduced themselves, because many times they may know them, but sometimes they may not know them, so it's good to bridge out, you know, let yourself know. And so then, you know, it's application, they interview and do some of those things, obviously, you know, the years of experience and that kind of stuff is something that's taken into consideration as the principal makes their decisions. There's a lot of things that go into those decision makers, you know, with the needs of the school at that time, with the big content area, extracurricular, other things like that, make it into consideration. That's kind of how I've approached this, we sent out that request, I sorted it for the folks based on where they were requesting a transfer, sent that out, that way they'd have it. In fact, I was in the principal's office, I guess it was, it may have been, I guess it was last week, when they, they had their sheet that I'd sent them out and they'd highlighted the ones that fit current positions that they had open at their school. Obviously, you know, if somebody's requesting a position that's, you know, library media specialist, but I don't have a library media specialist open, and you know, it's a good mental note to know that somebody might be interested in it if something comes up in the future, but that's kind of how I perceive it. And I encourage people to contact their principal as well, because the position needs to be a good fit for that school as well.
Are transfers considered over new hires?
Well, you know, like I said, obviously, I've sent that out to the principals and I asked them to consider it and evaluate that, you know, there's a lot of things that they have to consider when they make those recommendations, so, you know, I would like to think that, you know, your service in the county accounts for something in what you're doing, and obviously, they've got a relationship with that school principal, they can call them up and say, hey, talk to me about this, you know, personnel and give me some feedback and that kind of stuff, so I would like to think that it would, you know, count for something.
Could you research when DEA and SBO were put on the agenda? The minutes, could I have a copy of those minutes as well?
I'll, me and Ronald will read through it, we'll read through it.
And the last question that I have, the last meeting that was held, we were not put on the agenda, and during the last meeting, the board meeting, it was discussed that if there was no work session, that we would be placed on the agenda.
Last meeting was a special column meeting, so there was nothing other than the specific items that we dealt with on that particular meeting, and that's the reason.
Thank you, that's all I have, thank you for allowing me to answer.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Hill, appreciate it. Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank y'all for allowing us to be here and represent our members at the meeting, and we don't have anything further to say, we appreciate it.
One quick question, Ms. Norwood at Geraldine, they started the PTO or PTA back then, she's the president, I believe she was, and she contacted me, and they've got... the president, I believe she was, and she contacted me, and they got out and raised enough money, I think representing Kerry Reeves, giving them some money, and some local businesses, to place some new playground equipment at Geraldine, plus there's some fencing. They're, I think it's going to be gang time equipment, is there anything, any specific thing that they need to do, other than give a Mr. Bud's, other than, they're going to take their bids or handle it, or when they get the money, got the money, so do we need to, I just may know what this is, in case they need to do anything else tonight?
I'll be glad to deal with Ms. Norwood, and Mr. Bud's, and kind of see exactly where we are, what the installation plans are, obviously, installing playground equipment on our property, there's some things we've got to make sure are done and followed, but I'll be glad to deal with them, make sure, and if there's some support they need to go into, and that, we'll work with them.
Okay.
It's all right.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's take about a five-minute break before we get started.